Come up and show it.
Okay, oh wait, Arthur, we got a few minutes.
Oh, all right, one minute coming up. Motion to approve the minutes of June.
May, May 1st.
May?
Yep.
We didn't get June yet?
We did, we got May 8th and June 12th.
May, anybody have any additions or corrections?
Nope.
Motion to approve May's minutes.
Motion.
Second. One favor. All right, say, I haven't seen the June one.
Okay, so you want to hold off?
I'll hold off, well, I can't correct them anyway, I wasn't here.
Okay, well, I sent them three days ago, so did anybody read them?
Yeah, I read it, yeah.
Are they good?
I think it was all right, yeah.
All right, then if there are no additions or corrections, motion to approve the minutes of June.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Favor. Any against? The eyes have it, eyes say.
Thank you.
Now you're happy?
Now you can roll on.
Now you can roll on, all right, stay sure, now you go. You change your plans, what's going?
It's good birthday.
Your camera's there.
Yours is fine. You have this camera on what?
I'm making the camera off the over.
You guys will have this map anyway.
Yeah, we got it.
Helen, are you aboard on the job?
Yeah.
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm Mike Riley, this is Joey Racing, private architect, and that's in the sandals and the owner of Stay Sure sitting right there. This was for you a while ago, and originally, the theater was proposed over in here where all the contours are. They had totalled it and they were going to place it over here. We've since decided to place it in a much flatter area, it makes a lot more sense, we think. It's going to be a lot more economical for the, for Stay Sure. You know, they won't have to spend as much money on foundations and stuff. For the most part, it's going to be a slab, about 6,000 square feet, roughly 97 by 97. There is some gravel parking there now, we reconfigured that some, that historically parks buses there, we made sure that we can still get the buses in there and park them. That's about it, I think it can go, we've got some renderings that we provided ahead time.
Yeah, you could take a look at that, so, uh, there's an existing theater in the round on their property, they're going to abandon that one and use this, so we're not really increasing students or anything, but we want a new building with state-of-the-art sound and electric and lighting. So this was the ideal situation for us, it was flat ground, easy for exits, easy to construct. We could have multiple exits around the whole perimeter of the building versus building onto the whole side, we have to do stairs and ramps and things. And half the building is a theater in the round, and the other half it's a workshop where they build staging and scenery, so they, it works better hand in hand. The old site had that workshop under it, so they would have to carry everything kind of up into your building around the entire site to get there, so this is kind of a more of a dovetail between the stage and the workshop area. And there's a few other bathrooms, we have utilities right there, there's sewer water and electric right there, basically under the building. It just makes a lot of sense that we're building right where it is here, and we're all hoping to build it this fall.
So there are a couple technical issues, the required per setback is 100 feet for this zone in this particular use. I'm only at 89.2 feet.
Sounds like the CVA.
Yeah, and then the lot coverage, I mean, it's 10% required, right now, before we do anything, it's at 27.3. And with this reconfiguration of the parking lot, then the theater will be almost 31%. So we need very, two variances.
Okay, before we can do anything, we have to have those.
Yeah.
If you tell me what you mean by black box.
I, I think I should just ask.
Cindy is our theater owner.
Um, a black box theater is literally a box like this, but it's black, so it can be configured any way you want. So the chairs can go on the size, they can go, um, in a proceeding, they can go any way you want. What we're doing is Stay Sure is going to be here 50 years next year, and what we want to do is, we keep improving the property every year. We're constantly putting in, on a, on a slow year, we'll put in $300,000, $400,000 just to upgrade bathrooms, upgrade foundations, upgrade electrical, so we're always trying to upgrade. So we have a theater right now that used to be the lobby, and it doesn't really function for what we do now, the mail gets delivered, the laundry gets delivered. It's not up to the state of the worldwide reputation that Stay Sure has now. This summer, we have kids from 47 states and every continent funding an art gallery, and we're only 288 kids at a time. So we have a gigantic reputation, and what we've decided to do is name this theater after the Sondheim, Stephen Sondheim, the Broadway creator, director, producer, writer, and the Sondheim Foundation is going to work with us on that. So what we had proposed to do is replace a theater that we currently have with a much better one. And, um, we're trying to make it as small as we can, and include a scenic shop, and we do have the tennis court, but this, um, if we need to get that back, and if we need to move the building, we just want to get it done in September, because obviously, I am having a huge 50th anniversary celebration next year on June 13th, so my door is better, better than the other one. So that's why we're trying to move as fast as we can, and just so you guys know, it's all local businesses that we're using.
The problem is.
So it's Ballsburg Gas and Sullivan Fire and Fallsburg number.
The problem lies time-wise with the GBA, because, uh, you, you don't fit the zoning requirements, so you need to get what's called a variance.
Um, what, what we were told, what we were told in the past, and when we came last time, that if we gave back the tennis court, which is back here, which is much larger.
It's not a matter of, it's a matter of how far you walk from.
Oh, we, we, if need be, we can compromise on the setback. We can't compromise completely because we don't want to be on the road, but we can definitely compromise on the setback if we need to. Behind us is all, um, drop-off that can't be built on, um, and it's all wetlands behind us. So you can't actually do anything on that, it has to stay far.
Well, the question is, is there any way to do it without having to give a variance?
No, I think it's going to be too far into the camp for Cindy, I mean, we, we put it, we, we were out there, we spent a little time trying to figure out where to put it, and.
We can move five, 10 feet.
Well, send that.
We know, we need to go like 11 feet, to not have a variance.
The planning board doesn't have the ability to vary, so, uh, vary the rule.
How much does it take to get a variance?
To go to the CVA.
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a different board, you would have to get on their agenda for, um, next month.
Yeah, you already missed July.
So you missed July, so you would, it would be August.
What's a third Thursday in August?
Third Thursday in, in August, and that's.
Ah, then we're not building.
I know.
And then you'd have to go back here in September.
Yeah, that's what Arthur was trying to say, is that for about.
Still work through planning items, but.
You can't, you can't consider it as long as it's not, uh.
You're going to approve.
If it doesn't comply with the zoning, we can't, we can't do anything.
There's a setback of the, of the.
Because of the setback and the lot coverage, so if you were coming in here and everything was, you know, like you weren't increasing the lot coverage even though that's a pre-existing condition.
Yeah.
That would be fine, but because you're increasing the non-conformity of the lot coverage and you're not conforming to the, um, to the setbacks, you have to go to the CVA, it's just no.
Could I ask you a question? What if we were to keep at the 100 feet and maybe still pursue on a back burner a variance if we got it, we'll slide it back, if not, we forget about it? And the second thing is, the lot coverage is really being impacted by the parking lots. That's not the building that's doing it, it's, it's three times this space on the parking lots. Is there a way that we could use a type of gravel that's pervious, or just not propose that much parking lot, just so we can get past this point?
Well, if you have enough parking to begin with, you're saying you have 290 kids, right?
Well, they park on lawns and things like that, what we're doing is memorializing the spots they park with gravel, now all of a sudden, I'm getting killed with the.
It's mostly an empty parking lot most of the time.
The whole, this whole site is a big field.
Empty parking lot.
Right, so what I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, if we could just leave it the way it is, leave it as all lawn, and it's only when people come to see a show that it gets filled, the kids don't have cars. Uh, but if we could just shift this forward in the interest of just getting it built this fall, and then just forget about that parking lot, and maybe sacrifice this tennis court that no one uses anyway. If we can get into the 20% and the 100-foot setback, could we move forward and maybe do an indentum in the future if we, if it mattered?
We were told, we were told the past that we gave back the tennis court, that it would equal out, because we never had, in 45 years, we never had any, um, designation, they just gave us a designation a couple of years ago.
Designation.
Of how much, uh, uh, how we would be classified, all those years we never had it until we built the town building.
She's just saying that the lot coverage was never brought up back in the day.
Yeah, up until a few years ago, it was never brought up.
Well, what if they, uh, lawn area is gravel, covered with grass, so it becomes hardened? In other words, right now, if you just have grass and it rains, you're stuck.
Well, there's, there's plastic structures, some structures that are used, stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, you could do pervious paving, stuff like that, it's expensive.
Yeah, they, they have it at the Catskill Brewery, a couple of places.
Perhaps you can get around that part.
If you're not, even though they're 27%, if they take the tennis courts, if they're supposed to be removed, and they're not increasing the actual lot coverage, it's not increasing the non-conformity.
Well, with the, with the reconfiguration of the parking lot, even if I take out the tennis, I'm a little over, but if I have to, I could trim back the parking to make the numbers match.
Right.
So you just have to be comfortable with moving the building up to 100.
Well, you know we can't do anything as long as it's a violation.
We don't.
Try what we want.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll move it forward if we have to.
That's what you want to do.
So if we could, uh, to conclude, if we were to lose some of the parking for now, move the building 10 feet, that we can continue with planning board approval?
Yeah, I think the, the problem is, is we, we did have a public hearing on this, didn't we?
No.
Mine hurt. Okay, good.
Presented once before.
It was presented, but it wasn't in a public.
In December, they came and we said, we'll have the public hearing next month, but they didn't come back.
I got you.
And they pulled off.
So I can, I'll revise it to move it to 100 feet, make the numbers work with the lot coverage, so it's not more than what it is right now.
Right.
And with your blessing, do a public hearing in August as well.
What's the schedule like then?
I have nothing right now.
Yeah.
So that sounds like a plan.
Yeah, that, and then they, uh, work with Helen, get it all set, it's easy enough. I won't be here in August, but, well, her will.
Okay.
And if you get it, should be able to get it.
Yeah, no, it's a simple, uh, simple project. Yep, I just wish it didn't take you so long to change your mind and come back, right?
Well, what happened was, what happened was the architect overbuilt and overdesigned, and so we have to start again.
Yeah, no, I need to, I hear.
It was a tough site they chose, on the hill, and you have these decks, that all the money was going towards decks.
We've been working on this forever.
Joe, you have another copy left for the file?
I have, I have one, okay, I got, I got it. So.
Any other issues, anything without work, and she was there.
One half percent of the time, guys, because otherwise, the minutes are not going to be able to take it up.
Why haven't we found it there?
What we, what happens with the parents coming over to agree with Jimmy Gee down the street, they park on his property. Down Perry Road on his, on his lawn, yeah, Jimmy Gee, Jimmy Gee, that's his property on his property.
Right here.
Okay, and what happened, Jimmy Gee sells his property, I'm worried he'll.
Then we've spoken to the college and, and agreed to have buses go back and forth from the college.
And you put that in, we're adding to the planning board?
Yeah.
Okay, because there definitely needs parking for all the parents there.
Yeah, I recall that when you were back here in December, there was a lengthy conversation about the, about the, you know, pickup.
And we wrote you a proposal, right?
Right.
That we changed, it's, if.
How did it work this year, did anybody?
We had three turns, at the most, we moved it further onto the campus, we had no complaints from anybody. It was much, much, much faster.
TJ, any complaints that you know?
No, I was just going to say, I didn't have any complaints at all.
So we also had, we also had police on the street, uh, the first one, except for when we didn't even need it, because there was no problem.
Well, if you can get a duck in a row with Helen, uh, it's simple enough for us, it, all this should be doable, don't forget to ask for a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll take care of that.
Yeah, I was, I was just about to say that, um, you submitted probably a short form with the original application, I'm assuming things have changed probably slightly.
Yeah, you want me to revise?
Yeah, revise the short form, um, the board came to declare themselves lead agency tonight, we don't have to do coordinated review, but let's kind of get that out of the way. Um, so our motion for, um, lead agency status, unlisted action?
Can do. Motion on the board, lead agency status.
I'll make a motion.
Unlisted action, we have a motion to have a second.
Second.
One favor.
All right.
Any against? The eyes have it, that's underway.
So Mike got me a copy of that for the file, so the only problem you might run into is that the board has a policy that, um, the applicant needs to respond to any comments that are raised during the public hearing in writing before the board acts. So that means if you're back in August, you may not be able to, you know, get the board to do any action until September.
Well, if Mike can, if Mike can respond on the spot simply enough, that, that will be okay.
Yep, if there's not a lot of comments, or you can respond, you know, uh, by the way, then.
It becomes part of the public.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you need to address any comments.
That's right, and then, like I said, the, uh, room, room between you and the college somehow, when we got.
Yeah, it's been a long time since I've spoken to them, because we, um, you know, I'm so dead set against taking down trees.
I hear you, but you know.
So, I saw, we own property across the street, but I'm, I'm not, I want to leave it woods.
But again, this is not going to increase your occupancy for the camp, right?
No, 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 we, we, just so you know, we have a weakness, we intentionally keep it at 280 kids a session, we will not go above that. We, we have decided, we made that choice, that, um, we are staying small.
Okay, so that's it.
Thank you. All right, thank you, I appreciate your flexibility.
And I've seen you in person, I've seen your name, God knows how many times.
Okay, item number three, Shugray Colored Road Properties, conditional approval, site plan review to construct a man factored home park, as well as the boundary line adjustment when you build a property, um, R E G, 56 acres. Of course.
How's it going? So since the last meeting, we submitted a.
Say your name for the.
Mike Riley.
Yes.
We submitted a, uh, basically wastewater feasibility letter that certainly environmental repair, kind of giving you some detail on the post-package plant, some of the details on that. And then right before the last meeting, we got a letter from GTS requesting us to look into the speed limit a little more in the site distance. Steven Mafia did a, a little amendment to, I guess, to his study, and actually went out there and decapitated 85th percentile speed, the posted speed limit's 30. 85th percentile speed, I think, was 43, everything still worked out. So I believe we've provided everything that you asked for. What else? You have any questions? We would love to proceed with approval.
Are you, you let talk about basements?
No, we didn't, we didn't talk about basements on this.
I was going to ask if the, if the bedroom count included basements, or that was just, uh, what was, what was the bedroom count per unit again?
I don't remember on top of my.
There was four, four.
Four?
Four, but no, but no basements, okay.
Now, all the grading is on.
I'm sure you could, we could have a.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that came up today, we couldn't remember, so will we on slabs or crawl spaces?
Yeah, the grading and the engineering indicates all slabs.
Okay, sounds good, so I did forward the, um, septic report to, um, one of my colleagues, so we just needed a little bit of time to review it, I know you guys have been very, uh, patient. My, my understanding is that we will, Delaware will review the, um, the package plant, uh, design, and I believe, and is still wrapping up his review of the water report, is that correct? Does that sound right to you?
Yeah, I know that's what review was done, um, and the water report, okay.
You can't, still has to sign off on the.
He has to do, sign off on the plans and get us some comments for Mike to just change some grading stuff.
Mike has those.
No, no, he didn't, he didn't respond to them yet.
Okay. That's it for tonight, what else can we do?
We were hoping to do a, to do a conditional approval, conditional on, we really done everything, you know, we can.
I, I just think there are too many things hanging.
I know we talked about it last time, because Arthur wasn't here at the last meeting, and the last meeting, according to the notes, we were queuing things up for a conditional approval ahead of this meeting. But I feel like if we can just wrap up the well report, right, the hydrology report, and the review of the septic, which we just got, um.
He can sign with, with approval from our ass by level for review.
Okay, so we have no, no comments or concerns about the, the well.
Comments, but that's part of his engineering comments that are always done once it's got.
We don't have a resolution.
I was, I was going to say, because what I need to do, because it's a type one action, is I need to reserve the tail of part three that goes through, you know, each of the impact areas, just, these guys know, like, just for the public, it's like, you know, all of the reports that were submitted, so I need some time to go through this. Thank you.
You doing part two?
I'm doing part two, yeah, exactly.
I'm doing part three.
Thank you. Yeah, if you don't mind, uh, because I think that is kind of the last part, and then Dylan said that he would work on the, you know, the neg deck resolution based on, you know, the, the justification for the, you know, for the part three narrative.
Okay, this problem we have is until we got a neg deck, we can't go going, you know, the package plant, it's an eight, 10 month process with the state, we can't do anything, kind of like.
Well, hopefully at the next meeting, everything will be settled, you have a resolution, you have a neg deck, and you can go from there. It's, it's too much to put, you know, on future consideration, we need, we need to see what it is.
One more.
So I'll forward that to you with Dylan, so if you have any comments, you can give it to me ahead of the meeting.
Yep, and what I, what we will do is I'll put it on my staple, um, I have a crazy grant deadline on the 31st, um, but then as soon as that's passed, we'll start circulating some draft documents so that we know what's queued up for the next meeting.
Okay, so is there anything you need from us, until we provide whatever?
No, I think at this point, we have everything, it's just a matter of just buttoning up the final review of the, you know, the package plans and whatever else we have. Right, uh, before we need to look at the response that we got, make sure that it's okay, right, or no? Right, the, you said that your traffic consultant responded to Gordon's comments.
Yeah, I sent it directly to Gordon and.
And Gordon.
Okay, it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, so then that's good, so that's the, the only outstanding item is the, the package plan.
So you get that done?
Yep.
Okay.
Look, obviously, there's no final specs there, until we have a neg deck, we can't even go back, you know, we have to get final.
Yep.
Final limits from, from the state, it's kind of a catch one two.
Yeah, no, I, I believe I know.
We just gave you a, an overview.
Yep, yep, I just want, uh, the engineer that's been working on the municipal wastewater treatment plants here in Fallsburg has a lot of experience in dealing with package plants, and some are better than others, so I just want him to have eyes on just the basic design, just to make sure that he's okay.
You know, I'll take Millsport on touch of them.
Absolutely.
Okay.
What we can do?
All right.
Yeah, it's a.
All right, Newburg Egg Whella. So basically, uh, if we want to find out and give it to.
That's correct, it's all ours.
Give us.
Good evening, my name is Joel Pona, I'm sending you guys to tonight, uh, there's a warehouse that has been approved in February of 2024, and we're looking for a six-month extension, the SWIP has been recently completed and submitted to the town for review. Uh, we hopefully will get the comments back in the next couple of weeks, and, uh, the intention is to start construction of that site, you know, once we have all the approvals from the state.
So you're reading for the delay with the SWIP name now?
It's, it was a combination of a couple of reasons, but the SWIP was open to the.
Okay, uh, any questions? Motion for a six-month extension?
Vote.
Second. One favor.
Who was the first in the second?
I did.
But he was the second, but he was the first.
Thank you.
Are the prices going to come down?
What?
The prices.
Egg prices, it's a combinat, it's a combinat, I don't know, maybe. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
So before you've ever come down, anything went over there?
Oh, I costed it down. Yeah, very little.
The subdivision property to force into family homes, 43.4, 40 acres, location West Earl Avenue. Uh, motion was made for lead agency tonight, we want to do maybe a deck, are you doing this one, Helen?
Um, I believe Dylan, and you were all kind of queued up with the neg deck and, uh, approval resolution.
Did we get any response to the public hearing?
Um, I believe there was only one.
It was standing care of that night.
Yeah, it was my comment.
It was actually a comment from the board, not to that.
Okay, we had a written, uh, we left it open for written comment?
Mm-hmm.
So the motion was closed, the public hearing, written comment. Second.
Yes.
Favor.
All right.
Okay, public hearing closed.
The only item that was, that was brought up at the last meeting was someone said that maybe a four-inch water main on Laurel, it turns out to be a 10-inch water main.
It was the quiet roads subdivision that you, foreign, got mixed up.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay.
So it's a 10, it's a 10-inch water main, which has plenty.
Yeah, that's why I said, I know Laurel, I've got it.
You got 10-inch water main, but not enough water to put through it, so it doesn't matter what you have.
You can't have everything.
Helen, you want to take this one over the first one?
Uh, Nate's going to take it over the first one.
Oh, somebody's got it, huh?
Somebody got it, that's right.
So on the, uh, neg deck, that's been reviewed, and there has been a determination in regard to whether the proposed action will create material conflict with the dropped land use plan as only regulation. A determination has been made that no or small impact may occur in regard to the question of will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of land. Uh, minimal or small impact will occur. In regard to the question of will the proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to the question of will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental care area, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to will the proposed action cause an increase in the u, excuse me, uh, scratch that. Uh, in regard to the question of will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure or mass transit, biking or walkway, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it.
Miss.
What's that? Use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to the question of will proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regards to whether the project will, uh, impact existing public-private wastewater treatment utilities, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regards to the question of will proposed action impair the, uh, character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to the question of will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to the question of will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems, the answer is no or small impact will occur. In regard to will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health, the answer is no or small impact will occur. Therefore, based on this action, uh, which is to propose the subdivision of a parcel into four major lots, the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment or surrounding community.
Okay, we were given the above information, are we willing to, uh, vote for a negative declaration of environmental significance?
Sure.
Who's going to make the motion?
I'm ready.
So here's second.
I'll second it.
Any objections? One favor. I, the eyes have it.
Thank you, so there's approval.
Uh, now you want final approval. See, you give, you give a little bit. Any comments on it?
No, I think they, they have it up as well, right?
You ready on that? You ready on that, or?
What's that?
You ready on that?
Uh, I, uh.
The resolution.
Try the resolution, yeah. Take the board up there.
Yeah, the standard resolution.
All right, being resolved, is the town of Fallsburg Planning Board, based on the recent, the record before it, including the general, specific, and detailed knowledge of the project and community hereby determines that the current subdivision preliminary plat, dated March 25th, 2025, should receive preliminary approval, subject to the following conditions. One, standard conditions, adherence to any and all changes requested by the planning board members, town of Fallsburg staff, the planning board attorney, town engineer, town planner, and/or technical consultants during the review and approval process. B, implementation of all mitigating.
B, implementation of all mitigation measures referred to in the environmental assessment form and the negative declaration as adopted by the planning board. C, payment of all fees in accordance with Town fee schedule, including fees in lieu of recreation land specified in section one thirty-five dash two, and payment of any outstanding consultant escrow fees. D, offer of dedication to the town of land or easement for roads, utilities, et cetera, that may be shown on the plans or as determined by the necessary or to be necessary by the town engineer and/or town superintendent pilots. Specific site conditions. A, prior to filing the subdivision map and certificate of occupancy, the address of the record owner should be added to the plat. B, a shared use agreement for utilities and road needs to be reviewed and approved by the town attorney. C, right-of-way documents need to be reviewed and approved by the town attorney. Staff review and inspection conditions. A final review of plans and supporting materials will be made by staff to confirm that all of the requested changes have been made and conditions have been met prior to issuance of building permit. D, staff may conduct periodic field visits and inspections during construction. Any construction variations and planning board approval may require additional board approvals. Be it further resolved, that the applicant must submit a final plat to the planning board within six months. Do I have a motion on that resolution?
Motion.
Any comments, please? Say, a motion for preliminary approval with final approval pending specific condition? Motion, one or second? One favor?
Just make sure when, if there's felony permits, that the contractor know to contact the water and sewer department for any of the connections for each block.
Sure, of course, and that, uh, look around, you'll be adhering that before they issue from that.
This gets done in a day, and maybe they know about it.
Sure. Thank you.
I didn't remember, I think, if they made them? No, I think that's the right.
Yes, I was engaged originally, but let Joel do his recap.
So, Kansas mean, this project was originally approved in twenty-twenty-two, um, and last approval, and we restarted approval in September of twenty-four. We could have a public hearing in October of twenty-four, which was called, um, and was left open for written comments. Um, this project couldn't move forward at the time. The board was basically ready to re-improve the project, but, uh, they couldn't move forward because Helen noted that an agreement which was originally done in nineteen ninety-nine had expired, and that, that agreement had to be upgraded or updated and, uh, be approved again by the town board. So that took a while back and forth from that, and that agreement has been approved on June, June seventeenth of twenty-twenty-five by the town board, which, uh, uh, puts that agreement back in place and increases the capacity for the project.
That, that's the sewer, right?
Yes, yes. Um, DUC and DOH did, did have comments, some comments on the water and sewer. Engineer responded to those comments, so we're awaiting hopefully final approval from DUC and DOH, you know, any day. I don't, I don't mean any day. Because with DUC and DOH, they.
Anytime.
Anytime, that's right.
Any. So, um, when this came back, I don't know, did you, if you wanted to explain the sewer agreement, the, the nature? Because that's, it had me a little bit confused. Um, the agreement allows the camp to discharge up to fifty thousand gallons a day currently.
Correct.
And up to eighty thousand gallons a day once the plant is upgraded.
Correct.
So my understanding in speaking with, um, Brock, who's one of our partners, he's been working on an evaluation of the Mount Neil wastewater treatment plant, is that the plant is, um, you know, at or near capacity, particularly in the summer months. But some of the plant's ability to, um, treat wastewater, um, is based on the fact that it's a lagoon system, and the lagoons haven't been really properly maintained the way they, um, should be. So there was a, uh, part of the agreement was the camp bought a vacuum truck, right? So that the town now has the equipment that they can.
To maintain the lagoon and, uh, improve the.
They used to contract that out, so now they have the equipment where they can do some of that themselves.
They did not contract that out, I believe, because it's too expensive.
They got a price to contract.
That's, that's why they didn't do it, it was too expensive.
And they haven't done it in, who knows, fifteen, twenty years.
Gotcha.
And, uh.
So, yeah, so I was a little bit confused with the numbers, so I just want to confirm that the camp's existing flow that they're sending plus any additional flow from the expansion will be under the fifteen thousand that's in the agreement.
That is exactly correct. Uh, the satellite shows the numbers for water and sewer, they have to be forty-four thousand.
Okay.
So which is below the fifty. So if anytime they will have to, or if they want to expand, obviously they have to come back and run water down.
So I don't.
Those number are below the fifty.
I don't think we've taken any seeker formal action on this yet, because it was a new application. I know you provided a new EAF back in October.
Correct.
Um, the long form EAF, um, says that the total anticipated water usage, which roughly, you know, generates.
Sewer.
Translates into sewer, um, says fifty-two thousand, that one today. So I just want to make sure, before we do seeker, that that's corrected to reflect, you know, the, the numbers that you're mentioning.
Uh, we can, we can, uh, we can submit a revised home form if you want that.
And, uh.
The number says, I believe, a correct forty, forty-four thousand gallons per day.
Yeah, so I just make sure it's consistent, because again, this was done, you know, whatever, months and months ago. Um, last time we did lead agency with coordinated, um, uh, review, because it's an unlisted action. So Arthur, it's up to you, I mean, obviously, uh, you know, DOH and DEC have been involved in the, the permitting process, so they're aware of the project. So it's up to you if you want to, and you can ask Nate as well, what his opinion is, um, whether you want to do coordinated or uncoordinated review per seeker. Given that it's a project that's been through this process.
We've been through the process, we did lead agency notices that are beginning of the project, and, uh, as you said, you know, all agencies are aware of the project, everything has been submitted, or that I would ask the board to consider reaffirming the original NECDAC or if you want to do a new NECDAC.
What can we gain with the coordinated review, if we did, if we asked for it?
Uh, again, coordinated review and, and Nate can sign in as well.
Besides using time?
Uh, using time, um, but it, it basically, uh, puts other involved agencies on notice that this project is happening. And like I said, in this case, you know, they were already very much, uh, you know, aware and involved, so.
It's not necessary.
Well, Nate, she needs the attorney, so almost an amen.
He need to eat a bowl.
And it is one of those things, I think, to be, um, as they are leave the agency, they're able to run through that process and they're able to review all of that. If it is something that you feel, uh, needs to be confirmed with them, that is an option that you have, that you can also take as well. If you need to contact them to discuss it before making a decision on it, that's one option you also have.
Well, it's been approved before, everybody that would be contacted already knows about it. So there's no sense adding to the paper. Who would agree with that?
Right, we agree.
Yeah.
So in that case, just, you know, it's a formality, but just do a motion to declare yourselves lead agency for this new review, even though it was previously approved, that's expired, we have to treat it as if we're a new application.
Okay, so motion lead agency says unlisted action?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
One favor? One time there.
Joel, do you have an objection if you just give us until the next meeting, so I can work with Dylan on a, a formal NECDAC resolution and a conditional site plan resolution? The only reason being that when we had our conversation, we talked about a possible condition, um, you know, being that somehow connected to the town actually maintaining those lagoons or starting that, that process. Because right now, as it is, without the work being done on those lagoons, it's, it's very sort of touch and go in terms of the plant's capacity to treat the existing, um, waste. So you're, you're not planning on, like, doing anything tomorrow, right? You've got your camp season now, come, you know, like, already in full operation?
Yes, they're in full operation. Uh, I get to your point, Helen, to that. Well, that's regard with, uh, maintaining the lagoon.
They, basically, they can't.
The truck is ready, yeah.
They can't maintain the lagoon during the summer because it's fading.
Right.
So they have to have a schedule.
Even if they start tomorrow, even if it starts construction tomorrow, the sewer flow will obviously not go to the lagoon until at least six months.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is that maybe it's based on, maybe it's a condition.
We have the administrator of the camp, um, Brother Keller here. I don't know if he has plans tomorrow to start construction, maybe one break down tomorrow?
We do. I want to thank, should I come up?
Sure.
Hello, my name is Yitzhak David Keller, president of Camp Los Minim, and I appreciate all your time here. Each and every one of your service, that you've been there and the time you spent to review this. Of course, we appreciate Joel, he spends four years of his life dedicated to this project, once many, thousands of others. And he's very well-tempered and has a great team, and we appreciate it. Um, the thing is with such a project of building up the, uh, these buildings is that we've spent four years and tens of thousands of dollars in getting to this point. So the board and donors are tired, and they want to see approvals. Especially since there's a bill that's due of tremendous amounts of money to the town, and we want to get it paid. So when you have approvals, you turn to the person and say, look, I got my approvals, here are the plans, we're building tomorrow. We're not building tomorrow. You know that July and August are camp seasons, they're not building seasons, right? But we need to have the approvals from the town to be able to turn to the donors and the community and say, this is a project that has been approved, join us and help us make this a reality. So anything that delays that, not only peters on my personal energy, but also in a real serious way, the, the donors and the community that supports it. So I would ask a, a personal request, if it's possible, after all that we've done and supplied the town with and taken care of, that we should get approved today. Uh, does any other conditions you want to add to DOH's utility that actually officially takes them weeks or months sometimes to respond?
What if the sewer superintendent provided a work schedule and signed that for the next, you know, to do the work between now and January?
I, I was.
For the, for the, for the record, for the.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't talk, that's why we didn't really have a chance to talk kind of specifics, but I, I think the point is, is just before, uh, like a CO, you know, is, is issued for the additional occupancy, we want to make sure that that sewer plant is ready to accept that additional flow. So obviously, the existing campers that you have, you're already sending flow to the sewer plant, so it would be for next season anyway, but I just want to make sure that there's something on there. It's more for, I don't know if I should say this, but it's, it's more for holding the town's feet to the fire, because it's something that needs to be done and hasn't been done. So hopefully now with the vacuum truck, that'll, that'll, you know, give some opportunity for the town to say, okay, you know, we said that we would do this, and now we have to do this because we're beholden, you know, we're, we're beholding you to our action, basically.
Right, so how, so how about considering a conditional approval based on having that before issuing that a CO?
Right, I think that, are, are you comfortable with that, Arthur? I mean, I, I wanted to kind of get it all worked out and on paper before, but if you're comfortable with it.
First of all, uh, the environmental permit get done?
Mm-hmm.
Which we can do tonight.
Yeah.
The only condition will be the agreement, the set, uh, sewer.
Sewer agreement is already done.
Sewer agreement is already signed.
Already done and signed.
And what conditions will be open?
Uh, the only condition that we would oppose, uh.
That the town complete the work before they issue CO.
Yeah, the town would complete the maintenance work they need to do on the lagoons at the wastewater treatment plant before, uh, just to get occupancy to be issued.
Gentlemen?
I'm good with, but there's more we gotta put in there for. We still got two ugly buildings next to a road they are gonna fix up.
There's two, there's big tree.
Yeah.
One of the helps quarters.
The helps quarters out there, you guys can take care of.
There's very giant trees standing, they're gonna fall on that, just.
Yeah. Is that your building where your help days?
You gotta cut some of the trees and wait for the house to.
I mean, look at the place. It's, it's an ice, what's the fault we got?
The, the help house?
The helps quarters by the road.
Further up.
The three-story building.
Building up.
We redid it last year.
Gotta cut the trees around it. The tree, the trees are too close to that, to that house.
I mean, it's gotta be cleaned up, you know? I'm talking about the.
This one. The last one up.
Last one up.
There's the two, there's giant trees very close to the building, which are gonna fall on the, on the building. And that, you know, just not, not good the way it is.
Consider it done. Not get the paint job, because it's, it needs more than the paint job right now.
You seen it since last summer?
I seen it since last summer.
You gonna see it every day.
So. So the, the staff quarter, is there a building number on the plans?
Building number twenty-six.
So building number twenty-six, uh, painted, right? And the, and the trees removed, that were, like, just painted, right? Was it painted before or not?
Last, last, this, this, last season, we did the roof and the entire interior and some of the siding, but I'll.
That's good. Now do the outside side, so it doesn't smash the house and kill someone.
We took down over the last three years, just for the record, because we got hit with that Asian beetle, uh, thing. We reached out to the foresters to see what the right ways go. They said unless you're a hundred acres, don't talk to us, or a thousand acres. So we had to do our own and fund it ourselves. We probably spent over a hundred fifty thousand dollars last three years just cutting out trees. Because they were affected by the, this beetle.
Beetle, beetle? Ash tree.
Ash tree, yeah. So we're, we're doing, we're all, we're working on all cylinders to rec, to rec, to rectify fifty years of lack of.
Clean them up, clean them up.
We'll keep on going.
Clean them off, start taking this one good.
There we go.
Okay, did we get that? Do you want to repeat it for the record, Dan?
If you want to repeat it for the record, it'd be better than me.
Okay, so, well, I'm sorry, I'm losing track here. Did we, did we overturn the negative deck? Let's just do that.
Let's get that done right now. Okay, motion for a negative deck?
Motion.
Based on the information given, one or second?
Second.
One favor? Any against, so that's done.
And Joel, you'll send me an updated EAF for the rest of the house, the press members in it?
The conditions are?
The conditions are, uh, prior to issuance of a certificate of, uh, certificate of occupancy.
You will, yeah.
Uh, some sort of confirmation from the sewer superintendent that the maintenance of the lagoons has, has been done. Um, and that building number twenty-two, the staff.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. The staff quarters, exterior improvements and.
Actually, take the verbal part, you get permission. And the Dylan department has to do a camp inspection.
I know, but I'm just saying, putting in an issue with your.
Did it meet the qualities and answers in the building?
How much work?
Can I ask a personal question? You live in the neighborhood?
I'm sure.
What's that?
You both live in the neighborhood?
I don't live in the neighborhood, no.
So can we meet there tomorrow, or, and, and you'll tell me exactly how you want, and I'll get it done?
If you just look at that building, you'll see the giant trees are very close to the building.
It needs to.
It's not the trees.
Just around the building, so.
Yard needs to clean up.
Good.
Yard cleaned up and trees done.
Little bit more than paint. You need to fix the.
Side of the wall, side of it.
You need to fix what's falling apart.
Okay.
Okay, uh, before.
Can I also comment something? You gonna tell them not to?
Probably not.
Okay, so building twenty-six and the trees removed before building part?
So let's see it though.
I, I, I think before CO is fine, but Bucky is the one that's.
But Bucky is the one that's pushing. Bucky will take it before, before you go.
We can have it done before the end of the summer, right? Because they're gonna start building this September, you know, so why should people have to still look at this all summer? You got help there, let them clean it up. How do you clean it up now?
Okay, before.
It's gonna do tomorrow.
You want to put a date on it?
Put a date.
Whatever, I'm just saying, you know, we wait to September, October, next year comes along, it goes to get done.
August fifteenth.
If people drive by, it's not.
People living in the building for the summer.
Yeah, so I wouldn't let them, I probably won't let them live in the building, probably go inside of it.
Bucky.
Yeah.
Before CO.
Okay, whatever you want.
Before he changes his mind.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
One or second? One second, one favor? I can't hear you guys.
Hi.
Hi.
Who was the first?
Paul.
No.
No, Mr. Correct?
It's a NECDAC.
They go away before we change that line.
Now we have the election.
Congratulations. Let me just approve.
Don't, don't talk, you got what you want.
You don't, you don't talk, you're like, I don't pay the rent or whatever.
He's here. It's here.
Okay, everybody, Steve and Marsha, here's one of the applicants. I have an update for you on a variety of issues, and I will address what is in front of you. Chairman, you want to do that first?
Let's come, let the board know what the issue is.
Sure, absolutely. So there was a delivery employee this morning. We talked about a few different items about this. And he alerted me to the fact that there was an advertisement that had...
Why?
Right, that had led to the concern operated as a regular supermarket for the general public. So I'm here to inform you that that is not the case and to give you the truth to show why. My understanding is that the major concern that is in there is the little thing that says free deliveries, as if to say that you deliver the goods wherever in Fallsburg. I'm gonna show if I can approach, this is, this is the delivery vehicle. It's not licensed to go on a road, it is just strictly to deliver around the community. And the marketing of this is to get people to come and stay at HCS, to say, "You don't have to bring your groceries up there, we have a canteen and we'll deliver to your unit, to your room." That's what this is all about. So this is the delivery vehicle, okay? I'm just gonna show it to everybody. If you want, I can blow it up and show you that, that there's no license plate on the back. I'm sorry, okay? So this is the delivery vehicle, it's strictly for local use. Okay? So there is no market to the general public, this is not happening in a way that is different than what's being represented.
There's a second item involved, did we get that?
Hello, I'm trying, because it's, it's an email that was, right? Oh, look, it's a little wifi, it's on the USB.
Says, "Don't do this again."
The only thing on the USB is a email.
So you're giving a moment for a school kid to hear, and it said, "Don't do this again."
You want to try and answer this. You can plug your computer into the computer. Why don't you guys continue while I try to figure this out?
Should we move on to the next items or come back to this?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So the next item that I had on my hit parade was the questions about the loudspeakers and that issue. So my understanding is that issue has also been resolved. Prosecution for the violation has been terminated, so there is no pending prosecution. Dylan emailed me, this was on June twenty-seventh, indicating that there were interim applicable sound level standards. And those sound level standards have been tested with the loudspeakers on, not by us, but by the town, I don't know, I assume that some people called up and so forth. And Dylan confirmed to me what I had already known, which was that loudspeakers are being operated in conformity with what those regulations are. There are more formal regulations that I'm told by Dylan have been signed. I didn't get a signed copy yet, but I'm told they were signed. Dylan asked me to submit a permit pursuant to those standards, the noise levels are the same. So we're in, the HCS is in compliance now, and they will remain in compliance, so there is no loudspeaker issue. As far...
We have to get a, what about getting the permit?
So the way that it works is, is that a permit would act, there's, there, this, technically it's permitted right now. What Dylan said to me was, there were, and I have his email, I could read it to you if you want me to. What he said was, as of the twenty-seventh, which was before the kids arrived, that there were standards that they were deemed to be applicable and they require sixty-five DVA limit during the daytime. And that we were to operate within that limit, and that is what has in fact happened. And there were calls made to the town, there were people that came out, I don't know who. Dylan informed me that there were people that came out and measured and confirmed that that in fact, the loudspeakers were being utilized within those sound limits. What Dylan then said to me is that there are more formal, these were interim or initial regulations, that there are more formal regulations that have already been signed, I believe, by the police chief. I was to get a copy, I haven't been given a copy yet. And then Dylan said, "Please get us in an application for under those regs, which are the same sound levels, and then a permit will be issued." So what I'm saying is, is there is no noise issue, there is no problem with non-compliance. We're in conformity with the regs that were put in place, and HCS will remain in conformity with these new standards, which are the same as the preliminary ones that were put in. Is all that clear?
No.
Okay, what can I do to answer?
I don't understand what's going on. You have a loudspeaker and you turn the volume down. Who's making the determination that this has been resolved? And do you have it on paper? Do you have it on paper?
I'm gonna read you the email.
No, but who's, who's making the determinations of, of what's what?
The town.
The town. Okay, is it code enforcement?
It's also in the police department.
So do you have paperwork on this?
The town has a decibel meter. Code enforcement and the police department took noise levels of them flying the loudspeakers at, at whole volume, and they did studies around the property, and that was the report, and the town signed off on that. That's, that's what you're discussing.
This is, this is a very confusing thing. And who's the person that's responsible for all this? And if you, if you turn your radio up or turn it down, this can change the decibel rating, correct?
The town was happy. So I, I, I made sure that everybody understood what's what. So I'll walk you through it very carefully, absolutely. So when the town enacted its new noise code, okay? There was an outright... I'll, this was in the woodwork, okay? The town adopted a new noise code, new chapter in the town court regulating noise. And there was a prohibition on loudspeakers. But there was also an authorization granted to the police chief to grant regulations and adopt regulations for loudspeaker use.
Police chief and the code office.
Okay, and the code office, that's not a problem. So I had exchanges with Dylan by email to say, "Hey, where's your regs? We want to be in compliance, we, there's provisions in there for the regs." So we had an email exchange back and forth. There were draft regulations that were being considered, but they weren't ready, from the town's perspective, to be adopted by June twenty-ninth, when the children were gonna arrive. I said to Dylan, "Dylan, we gotta have something in place so that if loudspeakers need to be used, it could be for emergency purposes, a kid is lost, whatever it is that's going on, right? There has to be some way of doing this." So on the twenty-seventh of June, Dylan wrote back to me saying, "Here are the standards, this is what applies, sixty-five decibel limit during the daytime." I made sure, when I spoke with the folks at HCS, that they would operate within that. We turned around and we took sound measurements, not at the property line, which is where they'd be measured, at the fence line, which is much further in, to make sure that at the fence line, there were no higher than sixty-five DVA. And we had a sound engineer come in and do that, because we wanted him, I wanted to make sure that I could come back and say to you, "They are operating in compliance with the code." So that's what was done, and the volume was capped. In other words, you just can't turn up the volume and keep doing it. No, I'm telling you, that's what I said, this is it, end of story. That's what they gotta do. And so they did that, and then after the kids arrived, this was verified by the, by the town staff, who came out there and took measurements with the loudspeakers on. So that is what happened immediately before, when and right after. Then today, I spoke with Dylan again, and he said to me, "The regulations, the more formal regulations have been signed." I haven't seen a copy, this is what I've been told. The regulations by the town being adopted, and that I was then told to, to submit an application pursuant to those regulations, and that a permit will be issued. So there is no noise issue anymore, because everything that has been done is in compliance, and we're gonna stay in compliance, because the sound levels are not changing. Okay?
So the, the rules, the, in the rule book, it's been changed?
The town's noise ordinance was changed.
Okay, so is there, is there a new book or something with the...
It's online, Ecode.
Code three sixty is online.
The regs that I'm talking about, I don't want to mislead anybody. The regs that I'm talking about are not in the town code. It's the town code that authorizes the chief and the code enforcement to adopt regulations. That's not an amendment to the town code. Those are regulations that they adopt and they set the standard. Standard that is set is at sixty-five DVA during the daytime. That is what this is operating within, that's what the permit is gonna be issued for, and that's where the operations will go. That's why I'm saying there is no long range.
Do the loudspeakers go higher than whatever they set, so they're at maximum volume? It's not like this one goes to eleven?
This is it, this is it. If some, listen, if, I, all I can tell you is, this is what I've said to them. You've got an approval, in terms of what the regs are, you've got a standard. I don't care how you do it, I don't care if you have to take people's fingers together, whatever you have to do.
Are they willing to say, perhaps, that they get, they get caught with being loudly decibel?
They get a sole plan violation where they're building a...
Don't forget the violation, I take it out.
They get the permit revoked, too.
So they still keep it, I'm just saying.
So they got a permit.
They wouldn't be applying for one.
Yeah.
That's right. In other words, it can't apply for the permit under the regs until the regs are signed. I was just told that.
If they're signed, but the chief...
Now, what about all the rest of the camps?
Same thing.
They're all one unit.
I, I don't know about other properties or places, I have no idea about that. I got enough, I got enough service dealing with this application. Is that okay?
No, it's important, because noise comes up a lot, so now you know there's, there's a new law, if somebody complains, it can be four times, or five times. Uh, is it the first video or is it two on?
Can I call them out?
Guys, let me just...
All right. So this, this is...
This was checked up off the engine.
Picnic food market, seven twenty Hyde Road, Leeb's HCS Resort. It's got a little bit of a secret, saying what the guys want. This is a, interesting, schmack, grocery store. You're not meal, I'm gonna tell you something, you can't hear. Don't say it's you, I'm gonna shoot it exactly, then I can come on. Don't say, here's other, do, other is in the game. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, sure. Get some.
Which I have.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it's very wide, you can see inside.
You're not meal, you're not so, you're not so, you're not so much, you're not so much. You're not so much, you're not so much. You're not so much. I'm eating, guys. You can't, you know. Yeah, it's not that bad. What's that, this? This sounds weird. This lights it's a sound. I'm gonna say, 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 I'm gonna say. It's funny, man.
I hope you can't remember that.
It's a... Yeah? You're not meal, you're not so, you're not so much, you're not so much. You're not so much, you're not so much. I'm gonna say, 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 I'm gonna say. So, I'm gonna say, 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 I'm gonna say. Uh, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. And you can't say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. But you can't say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. Yeah, I'm gonna say. Fire? Toys? You're gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. We're gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. We're gonna finish this cooking. Um, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. Great, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say. Toys for the kids, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say. Larry, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. So, the sizes, you're gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say. Okay. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say. You're gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. Yeah.
All right, the, the point of it is, this video somehow appeared on the internet. It's entitled, "Yolish visits picnic food market, treat summer grocery spot." And in writing underneath it says, "He spoke with two names I can't pronounce, who shared how their store provides itself on friendly service and fast local delivery. Whether you're stopping in or ordering to your door, this place makes grocery shopping easy and pleasant." And we can see in the video, that's more than just a minor, it's full-sized grocery store.
It's, it is providing the service. I saw it earlier today.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw it earlier today. So I have a translation, if you want me to read it, for what's actually said in Gitch. Want me to do that?
I don't need it, I can see with my eyes. You can read all you want.
Well, no, no, I, I don't know what it is that you're concerned about, they are...
The thing is, if this is a grocery store, we have been, there's been some misspoke to it. If it's people coming in, and this is evidence of it in some degree, then we have to worry about traffic, parking, the whole thing.
No, no. It's not that, this is, this is...
I'm not listening to, but you can speak.
Come on, let him go.
This is providing what the, what the canteen is to provide for local people that are staying on HCS. It provides a more measure of foodstuffs, it provides local shopping for what they want. So I'm not sure what inference you think you're drawing from the fact that there's a wide variety of items in this small store. It's not a particularly large store, but that has a wide variety of items. They tried to provide what it is that they believe that the people at HCS would want. It is not being marketed to, it's not a supermarket for the general public. It's to provide what they believe the people at HCS would want. So they have, and I will tell you, they have some things that you're not gonna find in a typical store. They have census. Okay? They have toys. Um, they, and, and by the way, some of the kids who are special needs children work there. So this is part of their therapy. I mean, this is not your regular grocery store, it's not Safeway, it's not anything like that. It is for these people. Do they have a wide variety of items? Yeah, of course they do. And what's wrong with that? You provide the items that you think that your local people there would want. The more items that you provide for them, the better a job that you're doing in your local canteen. It's as simple as that. And, and the only issue would be if they're out there, marketing to, selling to, and servicing the general public, which they're not. The only inference or question there is about the delivery. And I showed you, the delivery vehicle is to schlep this stuff around this pretty big property, some tiny property. So they got a little guy that goes on this vehicle and takes it around the site. That's it, end of story.
I think, I think part of the issue is, number one, it was advertised as a, as a canteen. A canteen is sort of an outdated, you know, sort of term anyway. It's, it's not defined anywhere, obviously, in the zoning code. But my recollection from code enforcement, or here TJ, but that it was done, was it done without permits, without site plan approval, it just kind of appeared, right? That was like two years ago. Um, I think the board have received some information that there was actually signage, you know, on the road, directing people, you know, to it. So I, I think that's, that's the issue, we just, we need to clean it up. Uh, retail is a permitted use in that zone. So I, I just feel like if it's a supermarket, it's a supermarket, let's call it a supermarket. Let's do it as a legitimate accessory use and make sure that we can somehow post conditions that the general public is not gonna be using this.
We can't.
I, I just, I just want to clarify one item. That building didn't have a permit and didn't have a CO as well. It was determined by a building inspector afterwards that those were issued and added. So the applicant, and I was not involved in that, but they did have a permit and a certificate of access.
Correct. And as far as the use is concerned, again, TJ, this is whether it is as narrow as a canteen would have been when I grew up, selling candy and maybe sunscreen and things like that. It's the same concept. It's the idea of you provide what you believe the people staying at your property want. Most hotels have a shop of one sort or another. Some of them turn around and sell pre-made sandwiches, and I've seen it in holiday...
Why don't you shut that entrance down and come through the main, the main part of the camp? So that the traffic comes, comes through the main entrance.
The parking, the parking is for the shul and for the mikvah, which are located right there. Send up all the way around, and I don't even know if there is a way to drive all the way around, does it not make sense?
I'm, I'm looking for other options. So that somebody does not get hurt.
I understand, but I've, I've given you the bottom line. You cannot have kids in that space to have recreation if there is a single car there. That's a perfectly appropriate condition for you.
The mikvah, the mikvah is going to be for a hotel?
The mikvah is for the people that are there and for the people in the shul. And it's, and I do want to point out that it is the only handicapped accessible mikvah that is a, a, around so that people who come there for the shul, and they do come from offsite for the shul. I think everybody knows that. They may be coming offsite as well for the mikvah. There's an issue in terms of timing, which is it's going to take about 11 months in order to be able to build that mikvah. And so one of the things I would like you to please consider in terms of putting this off again, is that we need to turn around and begin construction of that mikvah. And the longer that it takes, we need to have it operational for this next season.
If I may ask a question, what else is hanging besides the issues we just discussed?
I don't believe there's anything else.
So the planning board wants time to review this. You've got no other issues. I, my feeling is give it a month, give it some time, and then do it. We've been, we're done with everything else. And had this not come up, well, we would have gone ahead. But right now, we have some questions. Let's give it a month. Where's the board thing?
Make a motion.
And the motion is?
Hold up for a month, but we'll review what we've got going on.
Anybody else have time? Helen? I think, still have that to win.
Yeah, sure.
Two things. First of all, this same shop has been there in a different location since the previous owners for the past 15 or so years. That's number one. Number two, I had a tour in the facility. I looked at the parking lot. Um, the parking lot is being used as a parking lot. They have like maybe two hours in the middle of the day that they have supervised play. So these kids only go there supervised with their counselors. So there's no unsupervised. There's a way to make sure that there's no cars and it's only supervised play. It's like when the Shafraid parking lot is doing the carnival and having kids come and play at the carnival. I don't see any difference.
So they put gates up there when they do it?
That's, that's what I wanted to say is the other day when I was there, when you drove into this canteen supermarket, whatever you want to call it, it has the parking lot for that. It's a small parking lot. There's an automatic gate and it says right on the gate, no park in between such hours. And the gate was closed and I could see the, you couldn't drive a car down into this parking lot area because there was a bunch of kids out there playing. So they do, like you, you're saying it is all fenced off. And you can't, when, when the activities of the kids are going on, from what I saw, that automatic gate is closed and you can't, nobody going into the canteen can accidentally drive into that area. It's, it's, it's an automatic gate. It's closed off.
Something that this meeting, we discussed, the fact that there's a lot of other areas in this camp for the kids to play, that this is not necessary uses.
Well, they probably do.
I feel that it's a lot of, it's mainly handicapped kids that might not be able to play in other areas.
Yeah, they, they might not be stable enough to be in a grassy area. They might have to be on a hard surface. If they're in a wheelchair, then they're going to be on a harder surface.
Can the parking lot be gated?
It is gated. It's all gated. It's all gated.
It's, it's all gated off. There's no way that traffic goes in there while the kids are in there. When I was there the other day, the automatic gate is closed and it has a sign right on it. No park in between such and such an hour, um, activities, kids' activities or something like that it says on it. And I'll go take a picture of it and show it to you, but it's gated off.
Huh? I've been down there myself.
Yeah, this, if you drive into the parking lot and canteen, you'll see it. It's right in front of you. It's got a big orange sign on it.
Given the way it's run, you, you consider the dual use a non-issue.
Huh?
Given the way it's being run with the gated entrance and so on, you consider?
I feel that it's safe enough that it's not, you know, and this gentleman said that there's, there's counselors with the kids.
Code enforcement is who we would send to find out.
Once you guys all look at those gated areas.
They're right out there.
Take a ride and look at the gated.
I have looked at it.
Can, can I drive in there?
Yeah, drive in there.
Do I, do I have to announce?
Just, I'm driving. It's gated.
Steve, um, have the plans ever been updated to reflect, I think I've mentioned this at least three or four times, that the parking lot does not comply with the landscaping requirements?
Let's get to address that.
You said you didn't have anything else. It's fine.
Mark wouldn't let him.
I, I was proud.
Mark wouldn't let him. Right?
I was proud.
Okay.
So the, the, the parking, uh, standards are guidelines. And they are not mandatory, right into the code 310, uh, dash eight. And so what we're asking, and it gives the, the planning board the discretion that they may be applied, they may not be applied. Given that there is a dual use here, we're asking that they not be applied and that there be no landscaping requirements because that would prevent or inhibit the abilities to be used also for recreation. It's only being used for parking a couple of hours.
It's also behind.
Right, it's not in the front.
Let's tell me, what happens to the cars that are taken out of there for, for, for the dual use purpose? Where do they go?
They don't have to be parked someplace else on site.
They go home.
Yeah, or go home.
The, the main part when the, the parking is being used when there's activity in the shul, which is morning and evening. So they, they're obviously not having these activities every day. It's, they want to reserve the time, these two, three hours if they want to have supervised activity with the kids. In the parking lot, they keep the right to do that and that's why they have the sign. It's probably happening once or twice a week that they actually have activities in this parking lot.
So if I can just read from the code, yes, the following are guidelines the planning board may apply. What the first line says, all parking areas which are designed to accommodate 12 or more vehicles shall be landscaped using the materials of sufficient growth and height to aesthetically balance the impact of the open bayed area and provide effective stormwater control. Again, I think one of the board's issues is that recreation area was removed without site plan approval. The parking lot was put in. The very least that the applicant can do is make it look attractive. I don't think the board's asking for much.
I, I don't see.
Shall, shall is absolute. Shall is not discretionary.
Right, well, shall is not discretionary, but it's within the context that the entire set of guidelines are not mandatory. So you do not have to apply them even though the subset says the word shall. Otherwise, the part that begins this entire section is meaningless. It says you can apply these guidelines or not. You want to apply the guideline that says 12 or more, you must have landscaping? You can do that, but you also don't have to. That's the only way that this makes sense to be read. And as far as what happened in the past, that's why we're here now is to cure all of those problems in a correct way. In terms of whatever was done, should have been done differently. In order to enable this to be used properly for recreation, there is no need for, landscaping would get in the way. And this is not something that is seen from the road. This is not visible to the public. This is something that's interior to the property. So the idea of landscaping, at least as I understand it, is so that from public view, when you're looking at it from the street or from elsewhere, it has appropriate landscaping to make it look pretty. That is not what is needed here. This is internal to the site.
Was the swift done when that park, was the, um, was the playground, was it impervious surfaces before?
There were impervious surfaces there. I don't know what kind of courts were there, but there were courts that were there before. Whether they were basketball or tennis or something, I'm not sure what they were, but yes, there was recreational courts there before.
I need a road lane.
You should have, should have been in best hell last night.
You know, it, this is a lot to take in and it's a lot of what I'm calling like issues. Let's just go, go away and come back next month. Let's hear the motion again.
Make the motion, make table this for a month, or you can see what's going on now.
I'll give them a second. I need a road lane. Do we have any discussion on this? Then I'll call the vote. One favor the motion?
Aye.
One, two, against?
I'm against it.
Are you for it or against it?
I'm against. I'm, I'm, I'm for this motion.
Okay, so that's two, three, that's the majority.
Okay. I'm against the motion, so.
See you tomorrow.
See you then. No more surprises.
I'm trying.
Is it taking a second here or something?
Okay, take a ten minute break.
Oh, are we taking breaks?
Kids, that'd be nice.
I don't want to be making handicapped kids. The guy who runs the playground.
The gallery alone has a chair in the parking lot and it's not standing. I don't know.
And there's supposed to be some kind of, I don't know.
They're regulated the same way that a municipal.
You have, this is right now, right now, okay? I get, I get this letter. No signature, nothing. Tell me is that five man, five man council?
People in the neighborhood?
Citizens of the county. Say that we got in trouble. Let them guys stay in there because we want you to stay, that we got this. Say, I see what they're doing. I see.
They did that over the gibbers.
They got four of them down across the county. And so each group wants to get this whole together.
And they're not going to change them all because they're free to change them.
So it's on a 30 day residency. You still have residency, some questions?
Why should they do that?
You see if they owe you two questions. Would you go from the door? Would you leave the door? Don't open the door. Don't open the door.
Are you the next one?
I might not be.
Arzer. Eat a bubble early.
They're getting ready. We've got two missing. Oh, yeah. It's the show. Okay, who's representing half of this city this motion?
I have, uh, Mr. Burnham with me, the property owner as well, an applicant. All set. As you probably all recall, um, this project has been before you for a while. We made a, a major submission in October of preliminary plans, our swift. And at that time, a number of issues arose. And the following meeting, we are asked to conduct an update the traffic study. We have done that. We've submitted that, um, to the, uh, the town. And where the purposes that we're here this evening is to hopefully continue the review of this project. And, uh, move this forward to a public hearing. That's the ultimate goal this evening. I believe that there's a, uh, a Hayden Mike that want to say a little something about the, the stormwater issue at the entrance uh, that we are absolutely prepared to address, however, that needs to be addressed. And I'm hoping that, uh, some little traffic study that we can, uh, move forward with this. So that's where we are.
We talked about how, I think last meeting, the board held them up because of the issues with the stormwater. That stormwater, that entrance is for phase one. So if anything, we should have the building department try to withhold permits or COs rather than have this application, which is separate, be that fault or held up because of their stormwater drain down the drive. So I'd say we would like to have the building department try to, you know, enforce that for permits, for foundations or something along with the existing project.
Follow me actually, since, since it's not being what I've done right. Um, this project would just be shut down, right?
We haven't stopped, we had a stop work where I think it's still.
But it's still working.
Well, it's, it's, to a certain extent.
I still see, I still see trucks and vehicles coming in and out of there.
There's certain extent of.
After looking, we're coming out today.
I think the problem is, is that.
We're not talking about that project. We're talking about this application.
But this is technically phase two of the same project. I think I, I was wrong. I understand that.
Different application.
I understand. You gonna let me finish? I believe the last time we had this conversation, it wasn't about the drainage. What was holding it up is we had a very long conversation about reopening Seeker. And where we left it was that you were going to come back and basically make the case why we shouldn't reopen Seeker. We were going to have a public hearing, get some input from the public about their thoughts on reopening Seeker. And then we were going to proceed with the environmental review on the new application. I don't recall specifically asking for an updated traffic study because it's more than that. You know it's more than that. It's about water capacity. It's about traffic and a whole bunch of other things. So, and that was what, October?
No, it was, um, February.
February? Okay.
Yeah, I was not at the, I was not at the February meeting. I was at the October meeting.
We did ask to provide an updated EAF and traffic study and stormwater management plan.
Yeah, the stormwater was submitted in October. And what happened was at the November meeting, we were told that you were not going to review anything until the stormwater issue, you weren't going to move anything forward. So everything was submitted in October and nothing's been done since then.
Do we have an updated EAF? Do you know that has been submitted?
No, because we haven't submitted that because the issue of whether or not you're going to reopen Seeker hasn't been determined yet.
All right, so then I think what we should do is after this meeting, my recommendation is let's just stop fooling around and let's just reopen Seeker. It's a new application. Things have changed. Circumstances have changed. Let's just start from scratch with a new application and start seeking again.
Wait, just for a second. You, you just said before that, that you were going to hold a public hearing to make a determination whether or not to reopen Seeker.
That's what we originally talked about. That was six months ago and we haven't seen you since. And then you come back and you're like, hey, it's a traffic study and there's no.
We were here six months ago and nothing's been done because this board said that you weren't even going to entertain our submittal. He told the drainage issue was looked at and, and rectified. And those were your words. And then the, the town in here is done out there. I believe that they have a recommendation of what to do. Regardless of the phase one contractor, I think our client is even willing to do that work if it loses the project ahead. We, at that meeting, we ran into schedule a public hearing and you guys said no. I mean, so that is the reason we're here. I, I'm not trying to play around with you, uh, with this thing. I, uh, I have some concerns about reopening Seeker because, uh, the, the main reason is because you don't have the water. I think we can, we can address the traffic.
So basically you're going to deposit that because there's no water.
No. What I'm asking for, what I'm asking for is if Seeker remains, mitigation for water is that any approval will be conditioned upon the water being there. We can't even start construction until the water's there.
You can't have a condition unless there's a specific solution. You can't just have a, a general conditional net deck based on a what if. That's exactly what we went through with all the other applications of Lock Joldrey. We stopped granting conditional negative declarations when the water tower went in.
There's only, what, two?
There were two. They were specific to, right, there was a specific improvement to the system. It was key on a water tower. The water tower was completed and now we still don't have water capacity.
We're not asking for a conditional negative declaration. We, we'd be seeking a conditional site plan approval because there is a negative declaration. And, and, and the only, the only reason, the, the only, I understand that. But the, the reason that we're asking this is because your code says that we can't receive a conditional site plan approval until, unless you have a negative declaration. And if we don't have conditional site plan approval, how are we supposed to get on that list for water? I mean, our client, uh, wants to be on that list. He fully understands that he can't put a shovel in the ground until, I mean, one of the conditions is getting a DOH approval. DOH is not going to give us an approval until there's a water capacity. And, and, and our point is, it's, it's not as far as opening up a new EAF. It is that our ultimate goal is to get a conditional site plan approval so that when that water's available, we're on that list and we're as high up on that list as possible. That's the reason we want to maintain the negative declaration. Not that we don't want to, we fill out the EAF, but we know that we're not going to get a negative declaration.
When was the original negative, like, oh, yeah?
I think it was like 2022 or something like that.
It's not that long ago.
Yeah. And it is, and as part of that neg deck, we were, I wasn't part of that, but my understanding is that, uh, our density allows for 60 units and we agreed to 50, uh, even though we can fit the 60 onsite. And, you know, and that was, and I think that was part of the.
January 22.
And encompass parts one and two?
No, it was, well, yes, it was the whole project.
The whole project was covered by.
Yes. Well, we had this conversation before with Dylan and he concurred, and you can have him write a memo if you want, that he and I both felt that enough has changed since January of 2022. That Seeker should be reopened. We have the whole traffic mitigation thing, you know, with the, with the light. The water situation is, has gotten worse. And I swear, we had this conversation in February with the, the attorney, the young blonde that works for Jay.
We did.
Right?
My notes from February say.
Thank you.
That, um, the drainage issue is from phase one and Ken would visit it in the spring. Michael had said it's not fixed. Bucky said ditching is not the issue. They needed a drain cut in. Helen mentioned opening up Seeker again, needing a full EAF and a letter to explain why not to open it.
Right.
We needed a traffic study and address the stormwater management for the next meeting.
So, so there's a bit of the traffic study. So that wasn't something, that wasn't tied in the sky. That was asked of our. I mean, I don't know what part of the stormwater was talked about. I mean, we submitted a poll. We submitted that back in October. I'm sure it wasn't reviewed yet because it was on hold because of this issue with the stormwater. We really didn't get to talk a whole lot about Seeker because.
I, I think it was. I just made it up to check. I think there's a, a review letter for it.
Yeah, they, basically the minutes from, yeah, the minutes from February were, we went through a big, long discussion about whether or not to reopen Seeker. It's a twofold decision. The planning board needs to make that decision as to whether or not to reopen Seeker. The applicant was supposed to come back and basically make your case.
And that's what I'm trying to do right now. Uh, and, and the big reason is not because of going out of the EAF and going through the process. The big issue is that if we reopen Seeker, we're not going to get a negative declaration and you will be unable to issue us any type of a conditional approval where we can get on that list, be on the list for, for water.
But if you can't get the negative deck, how can we go by the old one?
But the, the project hasn't changed. The, the conditions have changed, and we've updated the traffics. Yes, and we've updated the traffic study for those circumstances. The water is the, the water is the other big issue, and I, the, the fact of the matter is, we can't. One of the conditions of your approval is to, is to have DOH approval for water, which we cannot get until the water, until the counts, once that issue is resolved.
So I'm just gonna read from the Seeker legislation, and again, this is something that, that we discussed previously. A negative declaration must be rescinded, canceled, when substantive changes are proposed to the project, new information is discovered, or changes in circumstances arrive that were not previously considered, and the lead agency determines that a significant adverse environmental impact may result. So, as lead agency, it's your responsibility to make that decision as to whether or not the previous negative declaration should be rescinded or not. And the procedure that we came up with was we wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to make their case. Then we would have a public hearing and allow the public an opportunity to comment, and then you would make your decision based on all the information in front of you. So if that's still the process that you wanna follow, you know, I mean, you've heard from the applicant, if they have anything else to say, but I think you wanna go to a public hearing, right? So it's, it's up to you, Arthur, if you and the board, if you think that's the proper process, then you can schedule a public hearing, and the comments of the public hearing will be limited to, you know, the project and specifically Seeker, and whether or not Seeker should be reopened.
There's been a lot of changes, correct?
In, not in the project, but in the, but in the town. Traffic, water, a lot of, a lot of changes in the past few years.
So by, like I mentioned, that was the last meeting, when Joe was unfortunately not around for last meeting, he was.
Sir, can you just state your name?
Nathan Burnett.
Thank you.
So at the last meeting in February, Joe wasn't able to come, he was hospitalized, and his partner Vince came. And if I remember correctly, we spoke to board, the question, Seeker came up, and I think Arthur unofficially said, let's get the traffic study, because that was the biggest issue, and then we can see if we can do away with Seeker. So we went through that process, it took quite a few months to do, we needed a lot of information, data from the township, from the other projects around there. And we addressed that, and we have that, and that's why we had to see if we can do away with Seeker, being that we had the traffic study. We also addressed multiple times, um, our engineer reached out to the town engineer, to Ken's office, to see what we can do, what the issue is with drainage or function. Now, I know you mentioned that, that really is once a project one, you know, regardless, we had to resolve that issue, not, not to blame it on phase A or phase two, we had to resolve it, and whatever recommendations Ken's office has to do to appear whatever drainage issues are in front of property, who are up and willing to do it, will look to get a public hearing and do it, obviously, conditional, whatever approvals are necessary. And approve it.
We discussed that we should make that required by phase one, not phase two.
Regardless, right?
They're willing to do.
Willing to do the work for phase one, so.
So realistically, what Helen said is accurate, it's really just how you're determining whether or not you wanna reopen Seeker. That's with a public hearing, and that's something that will benefit your decision and make all of you determine whether or not these conditions are such that the Seeker needs to be reopened. And a neg deck rescinded, that's what some, you have the option to do.
You can make the decision right now, or you can have a public hearing and get, and get input from the public before you make that decision.
Condition itself be the solution to the Seeker answer?
I'm not sure what that means.
The condition of a conditional approval is saying that there's, there's no permits or any construction due to the fact that there's no capacity.
Correct.
Until the capacity permit is issued a DOH sign-off, that would be the solution to the actual neg deck reason for the water.
As far as I'm concerned, this board cannot make any decision on any application until they've gone through the, the Seeker process. So, yes, you have a, a neg deck previously from three and a half years ago. Circumstances have changed, again, I'm not a lawyer, but I feel like the statute is clear that you have an obligation to make a decision, a formal decision, um, you know, for the record, not just an informal, whether or not you want to rescind the negative declaration. If you decide that, then there's a whole process you have to do, just like anything else with Seeker. You gotta notify the other involved agencies, you have to give the applicant a reasonable opportunity to respond to that notice. You need to make a determination about whether a decision is appropriate, and then you gotta file, publish, uh, you know, an amended or new negative declaration. So, just like anything else with Seeker, there's a process, you can't just, you know, it's, it's not an informal thing. So you can either make that formal decision about whether or not you want to rescind the negative declaration tonight, based on the information that you have, or you can schedule a public hearing, it's been three and a half years since the project has been before anybody in the public, let alone, I think there was like four public hearings on it before that.
We have a new, uh, long form?
I, I.
No?
I don't think so.
And the reason being, because there was no, that there's been no determination by the board whether or not Seeker is, is good or if it has to be reopened.
I have something I'd like to ask, I don't know if you're buying. Hayden keeps saying that the water problem is from the driveway, from phase one. Now you're, they're saying, and I, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, was the Seeker done for both projects?
Yes, yes.
Then in my opinion, that you saying this is a separate project, that we should say it that way, I think there should be a new Seeker. If it's a, you can't, you can't use one thing for your benefit and try to take something else from it, is what I'm saying. If, if, if they had, if they didn't have to take care of the thing, and if they're willing to, because it's not their project, well, then the Seeker wasn't their project either.
The Seeker was for both projects.
Right, but now it's, he says it's been sold, it's a separate project.
Well, it was separate to begin with, I think, I can give you another example, Raleigh.
There were two phases.
Has four phases and three owners. So phase two and phase one all have to follow the same SWIP requirements. So if they couldn't build them at the same time, even though they're different owners, it all approved at once, because they could, were limited to five acres.
Okay, but that, then that says to me.
Well, it's the same secret.
Right, but that says to me then, that the problem they have, that didn't get taken care of with the drainage, should get, get taken care of under that. Because if you, if you make them do one, they got, that, that's just my opinion.
That's my little theory, you can't have it taken either.
That's what I'm trying to say.
But we're looking through the. Long, because the stormwater's not gonna, the stormwater wasn't one of the Seeker issues, it was the water.
Yeah, that wasn't part of Seeker.
Okay, but, but that's a problem now.
No, the stormwater was part of Seeker.
The SWIP itself.
The SWIP itself, which was not followed.
And proper construction.
Exactly, so it is.
So there's still a problem there, so I don't understand.
So, I just wanna read from the minutes, right?
I just, if we tell them that they have to fix it before they can build, it doesn't matter, because they, they can't build. So I'm saying we should make phase one fix it, because even if you put it before permits issued, there's no water gonna be.
How can we force them to do it?
You can't force them to do it, because they have no reason to build. I would say that I would like to make phase one have to do that work.
What's your mechanism to make them?
Well, they need building permits, and they need COs, so you could require them.
What, what's the, what's the stop work orders? If they're not fixing a, a violation, shut them down, and, and this way you get their attention.
It was just because it was brought up to hold them up at the previous meeting, and I was saying it should be.
What if we go with the new long form, and see whether from that.
I was gonna say, that's exactly what we asked for back in February. You said, we need information before we can make that decision, right? You're just a whole reopening Seeker.
See whether the long form.
And it says you'd rather have the applicant prepare the EAF, the updated EAF, and at the very least, update the traffic study. Does that sound reasonable, yes?
Yeah, that's a traffic study.
Yes.
We go through the long form, we find that there is nothing there, we can go with the old one. If we go through the long form and find significant environmental actions that are necessary, we need to research it, then we'll do it, how about using the long form to update the information?
Okay, see, I was under the impression that maybe the long form automatically meant that we will reopen Seeker.
We, we'll do it without, we'll make our decision based on the long form.
Well, you can ask them to submit information to the town as well, not necessarily on the same form, but it's just the information that's on the form that you're looking for, then they can just submit that.
You have to make a decision one way or the other about whether or not to rescind the negative, negative declaration. So whatever information you feel like you need to make that decision, whether it's an updated long form, whatever.
We'll come through with that in a public hearing, yeah.
Okay. What did you decide about public?
If it indicates there's no, not necessary to reopen it, we'll reopen it.
I'll have the long form, we have a workshop scheduled for next week.
I think that's, it's the fairest way to do it. Because there's nothing there, then there's no reason to reopen it.
We tried to do this workshop prior to it, but that didn't work.
And we'll just do that, do it that way.
What do we have to do to get to resolve these issues?
Right, so we're willing to do it.
I, I understand that, but it's not your obligation, you wanna, you wanna make amends, so we can move on.
Correct, and we're willing to take that responsibility.
But like Hayden said, they don't have to do nothing, because they don't need permission, they're not gonna build for two more years. So they don't have to fix nothing for two years, they might as well make phase one or whatever it is, do it.
In November, we were under the impression that we weren't gonna, so phase two wasn't gonna be reviewed until that issue was resolved, and that's why.
That's why we brought it up.
You've already done the hard part, which is the traffic study.
Yes.
So hopefully, it will come through and show nothing. I, I just think that's the fairest way around it.
Right, but some, some, it, it's not them, I guess, but somebody gotta deal with the issue with the water.
But that's a different one.
I know, but I'm saying, that's what Paul's.
That, that, I like your idea of saying to them, no more building permits until they fix it.
No, we're talking about their responsibility.
No, we're talking about water capacity.
Right, he's talking about water capacity, I'm talking about the water, the Bucky and I are talking about goes over the road. The drainage.
I don't know how we're gonna get past that.
I know, but again.
Who's responsible for that?
Well, the thing, the thing is, if we, we finesse the water issue, we've gotta finesse it with everybody.
Right, you can't finesse the water issue.
A lot of people want it in that position. Well, I don't know.
Well, in this particular case, when there's a neg deck in place, so it's not, it's, it's a little different than most other.
It seems that any conditions change, and maybe we can go right, right past it. If the long, if studying the long form indicates that nothing changed, then there's nothing changed, there's no reason to reopen it.
We already know that things have changed, but we have to go through the process. Do you think going through the long form and the part two?
It's just a formal way to do it.
Alright, well, I'll bring that to the board.
Don't leave so much on the table when I'm about to, I'm not gonna be here.
I'm leaving everything I can on the table, and I'm far away.
We could make the long form the next week, so.
You wanna, you wanna beat him some more something? Uh, attempt at some resolution.
I guess, behind the chair, right, I'm on with him.
Coming back no matter what.
How about we use that to, if we find our issues, we reopen, if we find our number issues, there's no reason to reopen.
Do you want us to schedule a public hearing?
No.
To use that information, whether you wanna reopen.
No, no, better off, do the long. Public hearing for the site.
Do the long form, it's either the same.
At this stage, if we have a public hearing, we, we, we open up everything, uh, I don't think we wanna do that. If we don't need it.
No, not if we don't need to.
If we can get what we need out of that of the two percent, and it comes out to nothing, then it's nothing. Helen, is that sufficient to you?
Right, well, well, obviously, there's, there's not capacity, there's not, the town does not have capacity for the water, so. That's in that box, it's gonna be checked, yes.
We're gonna get to that, and then we're gonna say to ourselves, what?
It, well, I.
If it's going to be, leave it whole, you know, if that's gonna be an issue, then you've got an issue right now, why go forward? I know you wanna get on the list, I don't know any way to do that. You know, you know already that you're gonna get positive, because there's no water. Then what happens?
I, we wait for the town to come up with water, or how, Helen knows how long.
Well, we, we don't know, somebody might know.
Nobody knows right now.
Do we, do we have a report from Ken? We were supposed to get eventually a, a complete list of.
Well, we have a, there's every, there's always water reports, but it's doing the work and having the money to do the work, and.
There is no date definitely when it's gonna get done.
And finding another well, I think that's the issue with the Locksheld Drive area, is now it has become a, you know, before it was a storage and distribution problem, right, which is still, you know, the case to some extent, but they are actively looking for other groundwater resources.
I think it's using wells that we can't currently.
I think it is time to have a meeting.
How about whisper, how about this for mitigation? How about we offer, we have property in the rear there that we will offer up to the town for potential future, um, wellsite?
You drill the well, you get plenty of water, you let us know.
I've drilled a well and done the test to see if.
Yeah.
It'd be used, so.
That's the only way they're gonna do it.
Yeah, because otherwise you can give them away.
I can give you, no, when you want to, the worst way.
Give them a mitigation.
There isn't an answer.
I mean, will the board be able to go through the process to the point where we don't get a conditional approval, but with, I was just trying to figure out how to word this, so that everything's complete, and once you guys have capacity, and you have deck in, buy approval.
I, I feel like we need to take it one step at a time, because there's a, a legal record that needs to be maintained. So the first thing that you need to do is submit an updated long form EAF. And I, what I would like to request is the next step is to get a formal comment memo from Dylan with his recommendation about whether or not the board should rescind the negative declaration, and then you can make a decision.
There you go.
I go for that, okay.
Sorry, I know he's not here, I'm gonna put it all on him, but.
It's not just for the town, it's. The applicant, that is a challenge for.
Exactly.
For artists.
Me too.
Inside.
Right.
I, I mean, if, if that's gonna happen, then our, the previous agreement for Seeker was to reduce the unit count to fifty. Assuming we, I mean, assuming we can go up to our maximum sixty-four now, if, if Seeker's gonna be rescinded, because part of the deal for the water and everything was to keep our, our unit count down to fifty.
Right, your agreement changes.
Yep, it opens it up for.
It's a new application.
But, but we gotta.
We have to take it one step at a time, right? Since we have a previous negative declaration, there's certain procedures in the statute that says the planning board needs to follow. So get us an updated EAF, we'll have Dylan make a formal, uh, comment memo with a recommendation, and then the board, uh, can make a decision, and then we'll go the next step after that. Right now, we don't know what that next step is, how that's gonna turn out.
That's weird, but since you're then reopening it, you get the privilege of reopening everything. The numbers.
Is there any report or anything on that water system, or?
The water system itself?
No, the, I guess, whatever I would look at for the capacity of that system.
The report was provided to DRBC, but they have, they commented, or they didn't comment yet, but it's, it's not ready to publish.
Okay.
Okay. But they're doing it, they're doing it.
We put Ken's PowerPoint, that's the, the system.
Well, that, yeah, there's an overall system that's.
Is that what you're gonna put up?
Yeah, just something, that's like, I think the town website, that's like, address the water.
I think the town website still has that, just a system presentation.
If not, we can send it to you, but it was our, yeah, it was a PowerPoint that Ken did, we should work with you to go.
There was two, there was two things done, the town hired, uh, BNL to do a water study, to find new water or increase their existing water. That report is done, and provided to the town engineer.
I thought it would be done by eight thirty on the water.
The town also submitted their, I don't know, it's annual, or five, five, every five years, or four to the DRBC for their pumping laws and stuff, and they haven't commented, but once it's all approved and accepted, then it will be.
What about going after, uh, phase one, uh, building the project?
Here I come. We have to again. Okay. Carl and Harry, it's your reaction. Finally.
No, we're not having.
Hopefully, something straight. I warn you, I can make anything happen, give me a chance. This is not an easy thing. Go ahead, what do you want?
Okay, so, um, what we're proposing here is a two-box, uh, the.
Okay, so what we're proposing here is a two-lot subdivision of a approximately sixty-acre parcel. Can you just state your name to the record? Sure, Anthony Sissano, romantic buyer.
Kyle Duran.
Yeah, roughly forty, did I say sixty? I meant to say forty. One lot being thirteen and change, the other being twenty-six and change. It's located on Forest Road, in, outside of Mountdale. The one lot, the thirteen-acre lot, has an existing home with a septic and well. The twenty-six-acre lot is vacant, vacant land. And we're using a nice, straight stone wall as a division line, the new, as the new property line.
So this should be really easy, two large lots, nothing being built on one of them, something already built on the other. How can I be a pain in the ass? Let me ask. The problem is, well, there is a problem, you have the surveyor, that you need seventy-five feet of roadrunner. You have this little area of roadrunner. You have seventy-five feet.
That goes fifty.
You see where I am?
Okay, and actually, well, L, the course that I labeled L2 has sixty-three feet. Now, that, you'll see that it, the old, you know, the eats followed the old road, which is still...
It's abandoned, isn't it abandoned?
Excuse me?
That road's abandoned, isn't it?
I don't know if it's had an official thing to...
It's been abandoned ever since they made the new road.
Officially? Yeah.
Nobody's passing it around.
No.
Tell me the beginning, no?
No one's ever, no one ever goes through that.
No one ever goes through that.
They cut off the hills, they try to make it less steep. I don't know if they did it or not.
All right, so what do you think about that?
Yeah, they got rid of, they wanted to straighten out that curve, I guess, way back.
Yeah, right, way back.
Right, but still a road system that's there, you can...
You can't drive on it, though, it's not that, trust me, I go up there, you're not driving on that, but yeah.
Can we consider roadrunners for our purposes?
What's that?
Can we, for our purposes, consider that a...
No, I wouldn't, because it's abandoned, it's an abandoned road.
And what do we do?
Neither go.
Well, what's the requirement, seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
I mean, if you think about it, sixty-three feet puts you on the edge of pavement. The town wants to consider that they have twenty-five feet from the center of the road. If you, if you took the center line of the road and offset it twenty-five feet, you would get your seventy-five.
I'd like a man who thinks on his feet.
I don't see a problem with it.
In that case, I...
I mean, the other option is we move it, and then you, you know, then you can't follow the stone wall, which is a perfect division line.
You're including the right of way in the seventy-five feet, is that correct?
Excuse me?
Including the town right of way, that's probably seventy-five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, yeah.
Yeah.
Say yes.
You can see the way the, you know, you can see by the angle that the line takes.
Say yes.
Yeah.
If you're ready to go north, you're gonna, you're gonna increase a lot.
Say yes.
Let me get my scale out.
Trying to help you.
I'm sure it is.
I don't know your scale.
No, no, no.
The owner said yes.
Say yes, that's all. Tony.
Hundred scales?
It's your guy.
It's okay, say yes, say yes, seventy-five feet.
You actually end up with about an extra hundred feet, so you probably add about a hundred and fifty total.
I'll take that as a yes. You need to come back for a public hearing if you're done. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Two-lot subdivision requires a public hearing?
There is no way out of that. You shall have a public hearing, it's a line, it's a code. Even though it's a minor subdivision.
Okay.
I believe it says shall.
Helen's looking. Yeah, I'm looking, I'm concerned.
Good comment, good comment.
They're very large lots.
You can waive side plan.
It's not...
Public hearings and side plan, I don't believe that, I'd be glad to hear different, but I don't believe we can waive.
I don't know, I'm sorry, guys. I know I should know this, but my brain, my brain is dry, I'm tired of drinking, I know, I'm very tired tonight.
No, I think we always had, we always had them, way quick.
We always had a public, what we did was, we'd have a public hearing, and then people started listening.
Do it.
Our experts, audience, said they were...
Never been retrieved these to be accepted by the board.
Sorry, guys.
So hurry, it's precious.
Bucky's trying to turn the circulation off. I'm sorry, guys.
It's all right.
I just, I'm just...
Well, call for a public hearing, you gotta do a public hearing, what are you gonna do?
It'll take two minutes of money.
Don't, don't wait for me, just, there's nothing else to do.
But the next one's gonna run to the same thing.
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. Flavours are pounding on you.
We've always had public hearings, and then we've decided to...
At the same time.
My faulty aging memory tells me we'll leave the house.
Well, the final post given, the public hearing shall be held by... So there's no minor or major complication.
No, we go around that one?
It's a word, shall.
Public, public hearing next month.
Okay. Do we need to do anything at this point? We've gotta give you the list.
You need to email me asking to be put on to the August meeting with a public hearing, and then provide the list, Diane will review it.
I believe we gave, we turned in the list, when we turned in the mail.
I'll have Diane review it and get back to you.
Okay, and then we do the mailing ourselves, I can offer, and bring those little green thingies in.
Yep.
I'm sorry, if we had a way to waive it, we would.
Right. Okay.
Have a good night, you.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, Joseph, by the, you press two-lot subdivision.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Picture signed, location, Rushmore Road, Fall River. Somebody represent it. Hello? Nobody's here, they must gone to sleep.
They saw the agenda, huh?
Yeah.
Schedule for a public hearing.
So he actually, when you look at his request, he has the long date on here, he says July fifteenth.
That'll be very long. Schedule this for a public hearing, regardless of the...
Okay.
And let him know.
Okay.
That was a simple one, too.
Well, that's even simpler, you can run it with two cars.
Is there a... Is there a national, well, before, I mean, just, is there a national subdivision plan? Because all I see is a sort of, I didn't take a look at it really ahead of time.
This is the main parcel.
Oh, so it's a natural subdivision for the road, I got you, thank you.
All right, so let's close the meeting, no one's here for the next one.
I have.
Joe.
Joe Con.
Too late.
Let's close the meeting.
No, wow, that's, isn't that that parcel of public?
No, it's not.
No. This isn't that lot?
A lot like this.
Okay, so you're gonna stick us into the middle on these jobs, right? You're gonna need a workshop for your...
So, I'll just present, I'll try to be as quick as possible, it's gonna take a couple minutes. I'm gonna go stretch. I'm gonna make Joe Con here for this project, this is my sign of living, along with the property owner, Moshe Pomerantz. So this is a proposed one-hundred-and-nine-unit manufacturing home project located on Forty-two Old Route Fifty-two. It's approximately eleven-hundred-and-fifty feet from the Route Forty-two intersection, if you go out to State Route Fifty-two. The project site owns approximately seventy-nine acres, and actually spans both sides of the old State Route Fifty-two. It's about seventy-five acres down the north side of the property, and about five acres or so on the south, on the southern side of the property. The small five-acre parcel is not to be developed for homes. This is proposed to be used for an onsite wastewater treatment plant to handle the sewer for the property. The property is within the REG zoning district, where manufacturing home projects is permitted. It's a permitted use subject to site plan approved by the planning board. The maximum permitted density, based on a net acreage of fifty-eight-point-seven-four acres, is a hundred and seventeen units, while we are proposing a hundred-and-nine units to allow for more open space, less tree cutting, less grading, and a better overall layout. The project will also include community facilities. There's a large open space in the center of the property, which will have a community building, a small lake and building, and swimming pools, sports courts, and trails. There will also be playground installs, installed throughout the project for the kids to have where to play. As you can see, there's a large area of the property, which is kind of steep slopes, that will be, remain untouched. This is all, all around it, will just remain in its natural state as it is. The owner is not a typical developer that you would see out there. He plans to live there himself, and is not focusing on squeezing in as many units as possible. His goal is to create a livable, welcoming community where people can settle down, raise families, and enjoy the surroundings. Also, due to, due to the topography of the site and the location of it, on this little road, it's gonna be mostly invisible from the main roads and from the surroundings. So it's gonna be kind of tucked into the woods, so it's not gonna impact visually anyone. In terms of utilities, the property is outside of the town's water and sewer district, except for a small portion of the property at this corner, which is within the town water and sewer district, but that will remain undeveloped. So for what we plan to drill on-site wells, we've had hydrogeologists go out on the site and do fracture tracing analysis to try and locate the best potential locations, which will be through with the DOE before they do any test wells. For sewer, they plan to have a wastewater treatment plant. We're working with Sterling Environmental Engineering. For, on that sewer plant, we already received preliminary effluent limits from the DUC, which indicated that it's a viable stream to be able to discharge from the wastewater treatment plant. That's basically what I have to introduce this project. I'm happy to answer any more questions, any questions from the board, if you wanna go into any details. I know this is gonna be a long process, there's a lot to be done on this, but I would love to get initial feedback from the board before we move on.
This is gonna be year-round?
His intention is to be year-round, yes.
I think you have to make those roads way wider there. I got a lot of traffic, I can't turn around, no.
We'll, we'll make the roads wide enough, we'll run simulations, we'll have simulations about future submissions of the full site plan. We'll have an engineer do a fire truck simulation.
There's one house across from it, and you put the road there.
What?
Your entrance road.
Yeah.
Is the house right across from it?
I mean, we can, we can adjust that.
I want you to do that before you spend money on this.
Okay.
Well, it's not fair, because the guy's living there, and you run down the hill, and the lights get him.
Are these on slabs?
Do you like to have basements?
No, not in the manufacturing home, clearly, you can't put...
Yeah, something we talked about today, we may need a bit of interpretation, since we're seeing so many of these. But that's something we'll get to later.
It says slab of foundation, it doesn't specify basement.
Can they walk out basements?
No.
No, I'm just saying...
We're not gonna allow basements.
No, no way.
Hi, hello, good evening, I just wanna introduce myself, my name is Moshe Pomerantz. Tonight is the first time that I've been by a, by a meeting, or a board meeting, so I'm sitting here since seven o'clock, getting an understanding of how things work around there. And I can sense and feel the love and dedication that you guys have, keeping this place healthy and building for the well-being of the people. And I can really connect with you guys on that, because that is my intention as well, when it comes to this project. If I can give you guys just a little background of myself. I grew up in the city, and I was sent out to camp right here on Gray Road, on Skinker Camp. And for me, it was very hard, growing up in the city, and over here, I felt a sense of peace. So ever since, I always tried coming back up here, and now I live here year-round. So I have two main visions, and from where I'm coming from for this project. The number one is, as I expressed, that I believe that it's a better and healthier living for our community and kids to be up here in the, you know, between the trees, instead of being between the concrete. You know, my belief is that's not very healthy for it. So that's what I'm doing, trying to create over here. My second intention is, I keep hearing from my friends and family how hard it is to just get by, and people can't afford their mortgages, their rents, their groceries, and et cetera. My intention is to have a community that you can just have a regular, basic job, and be able to afford your rent, have a community, have your food, and your needs, basic needs met. When I grew up in Barakark, I went to shul of Rabbi Yungrais, which is the rabbi in Woodburn. He has a shul in Barakark, when I was a young teenager, I was by his shul, and he was kind of, he showed me the way of, of how a person should try to be. The rabbi never told me what to do, he never told me to buy this property, he never told me to develop it. The rabbi is just someone that leads by example, and I saw how the rabbi was out there, and how he treated people that needed a care. And he's just my role model, not by telling me anything, just by, the rabbi being who he is. And I watched him for many, many years of how he treated people, and from where he came from, and I'm just trying to follow in his ways.
It, it, it sounds like you're gonna rent them out, you're not gonna sell them, you're gonna rent them, that's what it sounds like.
I don't know if I'm gonna rent them or I'm gonna sell them. All I know is that I'm trying to create something for the people.
Well, you said you wanted to make rent affordable, so I thought, you know...
Yeah, either the mortgage, either if it's gonna, if we're gonna sell them, it's gonna be at an affordable price, and if we're gonna rent them, it's gonna be at an affordable price.
Okay. Just was wondering.
Yeah, no problem, I'm here to answer any other questions that you guys have.
All members association?
I'm sorry.
All members association?
Something like that.
Are you on a phase?
Does it look like there's a phase plan?
There's a, there's a, there's a phasing plan, it's shown, it's shown as Phase One and Phase Two, so that it has the option to do it in phases.
Okay.
But that will be determined at a later date, whether it's gonna be done. I mean, obviously, the market and the market is haggling, it will probably determine whether it's gonna be one phase or two phases. But it's being shown as two phases.
Really hear a workshop in the background?
I feel it.
By the way, get the issues out there.
Sure.
You know, don't we agree?
We gotta get the consultants on board.
Yeah.
Wanna engage them?
Yes. Anything you have on plan, or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Ever?
Good.
Okay. You're on your way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, good night.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.